We'll call the order of the regular city council meeting on June 11, 2018. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lisa, let the roll call show everyone is present. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes, May 29, 2018. Councilmember Kennedy?
On page six, Lisa, on the second line down, talking about saving the additional money, the $1,000 for the steel tariff, that was $2,000 for that tariff. That's all I have.
Councilmember Friesen?
Lisa, on page eight, if you go about the second half of the page, Mr. Fleury is actually spelled F-L-E-U-R-Y. It's misspelled twice in the same paragraph. Thank you. That's all I have.
Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Yes, I'm on page six. It's in the beginning paragraph, I would say maybe about a third of the way down, and there is a sentence there that says, "She isn't comfortable making a purchase," and then she says she doesn't have a problem with that, period. I also said, "From a procedural standpoint, ethically, I just have a problem with voting on items that aren't even in a budget until 30 days from now." Period.
I move the minutes as amended.
One second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Approval of the bills?
None.
And now approval of the agenda.
I've got...
Oh, did you have something for bills? I'm sorry.
That's right. Page three of four. At the top of the page, there's two domain names. That strikes me as kind of odd. That's in the check register. Anybody have a clue what that's about?
That's a DDA. I believe those are both DDA items.
Okay.
And that's, the Brotoberfest is something Mr. Donahue would be happy to speak to during his comments.
Sounds good. And the G-Suite is the same kind of deal?
My recollection is yes.
Okay. All right. That's all I have. Thank you. I moved the bills. One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Are we still doing the lawyer bills separate? Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Yes, but I didn't have any objections.
Okay, you don't? You don't? Okay.
Tim's doing a great job leading the city.
So, Mr. Mayor, I did not get my question for your time.
I don't have any lawyer bills.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Tim.
My apologies. I'll do it for the next meeting.
Okay. All right, so we'll move forward to the approval of the agenda this evening.
I'll move the agenda.
I'll support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. At this time, we'd like to open up public comment. Please state your name and address.
I guess that's me first. Linda Ross, 373 Harvard, president of the Historical Society here in town. And we are here tonight to reach out to the community on a few issues that we have going on at the society right now. For me, we desperately need some help with our gardening. When we took over as volunteers of the garden in 2011, we had quite a good group. We had probably about 18 people that were helping us. But through the years, the kids graduated from college, got jobs, moved away. We had some older people who were getting to the point where they couldn't quite do the work anymore, and so they've dropped out. And for the last couple of years, there's only been four of us maintaining all the flower beds. We've eliminated a couple of them because we couldn't get to them, so that's helped a little bit. This year, one of our gardeners is now working full-time. Bless her heart, she is still maintaining the Blue Star Garden down by Pontiac Trail, but she does it on her time when she can get to it. And unfortunately, our co-leader for the gardening group is having some health issues this year also. So he is out of the picture this year, which just leaves me and Vicki to do the gardening down at the village this year. Now, we consider the village the number-one picture place in town. Everybody goes to the village for pictures, weddings, graduations, family pictures, whatever. People come just to sit and admire the gardens. They come and paint. They come and draw. So the village is the number-one hotspot, I think, in the city for that. If we do not get some help to maintain those gardens, they're not going to be up to code for picture-taking. They just really aren't. It's already, we've had two weeks where we couldn't garden because of the weather, so we're already two weeks behind. So we were there tonight trying to catch up a little bit, but we desperately need some help down there this year to help. We meet Monday nights from 5:00 to 7:00. You don't have to be a master gardener. We will teach you. We will show you what we need done. If you don't have tools, don't worry about it. We have a shed with tools in it. So we just need able-bodied people that would be willing to help out for just a couple hours a week when they can. The other issue is we have a new member that has joined our society who is dedicated to a old cemetery that is right across the street from the South Lyon Library. It was rediscovered a couple of years back, and the one gal that has joined our society is dedicated to trying to clean it up. We do have some Civil War and Revolutionary soldiers buried in there, so she, that's her desire, is to clean it up, but we need some help there. We were out, and we have raked, and we've moved some brush and logs and stuff into piles, but we need some help out there, too, to get this cleaned up and presentable. We really would like, if somebody has maybe a wood chipper that could come in and maybe chip up the wood that we have there and lay it in a path for roadway, we would really appreciate that help right now. We could use some more hands in cleaning up around the area, too, with maybe weed whips and whatever. So this is a passion of hers, and we would like to help her out, being a new member of our society. And also, too last, I would like to remind everybody that we are having another program next Tuesday night at 7:00 in the Freight House. It is the War Dog Memorial out on Milford Road and 11 Mile. A lot of work has gone into that to bring it back up to what it is today. The gentleman that is speaking is Phil Whitliffe, and he has a wonderful program, so we would like to invite everybody to that for next Tuesday night. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Jim Race. I live on Haggadorn Street here on South Lyon, and I'm a member of the Housing Commission. And in that capacity, I am here to report that we have ongoing vandalism in the, especially in the gazebo out there in the park. And we've had some success in the past in finding out the guilty parties, but it seems to be an ongoing problem, and our suggestion is that we need some more security in the way of probably extra cameras into the security system. Obviously, we didn't budget for anything like that because it was unforeseen, but it appears that the cameras financially are going to be the lesser of two evils as far as keeping things repaired. I have a police report that was started by Linda Ross, and it has pictures of the latest damage that was done to the gazebo Sunday night. And we've got a concert coming up Friday night, so we'd like to get the thing presentable again. It's going to be rather difficult to do, but I have talked to the DPW, and they are aware, and they're willing to give us a hand. But to solve the problem ongoing, something needs to be done to curtail all the vandalism that's going on out there. Security is one thing. Maybe more robust features to the gazebo might be in order. There are several things that probably could be considered, but they're all going to impact the budget. We are going to try to get everything done this month, hopefully. If that doesn't happen, then obviously we'll be working on next year's budget, which probably won't be sufficient because we didn't anticipate this kind of an expense. Have no idea how much money we're talking about because we haven't contacted the security company yet, but that will be our next step. So it's just kind of an FYI to let you know that something's going to have to happen, and we either continue making repairs to the facility out there or we get some extra security. Are there any questions?
Thank you. All right, well, that will close public comment. Let's welcome up Mr. Donahue and talk about the downtown.
Real quick, again, a copy of the report that Lloyd gave everyone that I put together for the past week. Number one, I'd like to give a shout-out and a special thank you to the DPW crew that put up the new farmer's market shed. I think if you look back there and the fence and how it's clean and open, and I think it's exciting, and it got its first use last week, and there will be more flowers that are going to be put on the shed. There are a couple of wheelbarrows out there, kind of welcome people to the area, so it's kind of, it's a feel-good and a look-good situation. But they did a great job in a very short period of time, so thanks, DPW guys. Couple items, quick. A lot of buzz downtown today with the one building project back on track on Lake Street, the last section of the Lake Street Tavern, the left side. The brick crew's on site. They have to redo all the brick on completely the second-floor facade, all the way up to the cornice. Little more expense than the owner originally intended. The project has kind of doubled, but he's committed, and that work will be done in the next two or three weeks. So that'll be exciting, all three buildings, and then we'll have a Victorian paint scheme there. But then on this morning at 115 and 117 North Lafayette, they started stripping off the Mansard roof. And the 115 where venue is, the historical building underneath is in a lot better condition than they thought, so that's going to reduce their costs, and the project will go a lot quicker. And then the owner, the new owner of the building at A&amp;E Jewelers, new building owner just came in City Hall, filed all the paperwork, so he has completed his purchase of the A&amp;E Jewelers building, and he's going to do a complete Victorian paint scheme on that building. So the good news is that by the end of the summer, we'll have a big celebration media event, and I think a lot of people are going to be taking notice that it's a new day in downtown South Lyon for a lot of reasons with a lot of great things happening. So we'll make a big deal out of those six building completions. We made some progress the last few months. We just want to give you a very quick generic update. We're making progress on the list of five maintenance buildings. We've had action steps on four of those five. We have yet to meet, and our first step is always the preliminary meeting with the building owner. We have yet to do that with M.O.S. So we're hopeful that we're moving things forward. If not, you'll hear about some other steps as we move along, but I think we're pleased at this moment in time where we are with five of the, or four of the five. The last item is, I was at a workshop in Monroe, Michigan this past Friday, and it was Downtown Development Tools, In-Fill, Preservation, and Commercial Projects. What I thought was interesting is that the capital improvements plan was a subject of how it's a signal to economic development, to developers, that, because downtowns are part of that plan, they play a role. But there were two different sessions that talked about how the capital improvements plan is a strong ally to economic development. So I think capitalizing on all the good work all you folks did this year with the budget, kind of exciting to see that next year. That's all I have.
Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Yeah, I just want to add two cents on the capital improvement plan. I've been pushing for that for years, and the reason why it's important is because if you're an investor and you want to come into this town and you want to purchase a building, and it's going to take you maybe several years to get that building in shape because you only have X amount of money per year, one of the things that the developers that I work with look at is the capital improvement plan of the local municipality. Because if the local municipality is not spending money and making an effort and an investment in either the downtown or the surrounding area, then they sit back and say, "Then why am I?"
Exactly.
So that capital improvement plan is critical in, if anything, providing assurance to investors and developers that are thinking about coming into the town, that they have a partner, which is the city, which the city has never been a partner before. So this, so to put, we still don't have a capital improvement plan, so, and we talk about it, but we don't have it. So that's why that capital improvement plan is absolutely critical, if you're going to get serious money, because they want to know the city's coming to the table and also has a plan in place for what the city wants to do, has a vision for where they want this to go, and not just sitting here asking them to always dig in their pockets.
Sure.
So I want to support that program 100 percent.
You know, specifically, you're dead on, because I've had developers, and now with the Draft Street Building, ask questions about conditions of the parking lots.
Yeah.
Gee, the light poles need to be painted. Are you going to put up some landscaping in certain areas? And so they're all well aware of those, and so they don't just want to know what's in the budget for this year, but how are those things going to be maintained over the course of their investment? So I agree totally.
Just to continue with that, if I'm going to do a building in the downtown, don't you think that that makes sense, that I want to know that if I'm going to drop, you know, $100,000, $250,000, $300,000, $400,000, that five years from now, I'm dealing with a responsible city that's going to, you know, here you have, you know, Linda Ross talking about she can't even keep her gardens up. You know, what's the same thing with Paul Baker Park? You know, that hasn't been taken care of, and that's a, that's a park that you see as you come into town. So you can see why developers are taking a look at the city and saying, can the city maintain itself? Can it appropriately manage the assets that it has? And the way they answer that question is they don't want to listen to the PR coming out of the corner office, basically. What they want to do is they want to take a look at the budget and see what has been committed to financial planning for the city. So I commend you, Bob, on whatever efforts you are engaged in to get that capital improvement plan in place.
Thank you. I'll make sure that downtown items projected out will be well represented. Thank you.
I don't think anybody's got resistance to the capital improvement plan. It's just trying to formulate, get together, and try to flesh out where we're going with it. We're not going to just, we don't need to be the ones guessing what are the most important things. We need to strategize and come up with a plan. Could you enlighten me about the domain name deal?
Right. We were lucky enough with a new event downtown, Brotoberfest. Now, that's interesting. What in the heck is that, right? So it's a play on Oktoberfest. What it is, it's a men's night out designed to really be a babysitting service for a women's night out. So, because we all know that the shoppers, all the demographics in the credit card reports show that, you know, women are the shoppers. There's no question about it. The numbers speak for themselves. So Brotoberfest is slated for October 19th, as, and working with Lloyd, we'll have the street closure request on the agenda next meeting. It's a place for activities, men and women, young and old, to really hang out while other people shop. And if they also want to shop, that's fine, but it's also a preview, it's kind of a sneaky preview for the major ladies' night out in November. And so we can use, we can get the billboard again, and we can cover the billboard coverages for two events under one month's cost.
Excellent.
So I think it'll be exciting, but details to come. Lloyd needs to look at it.
Are there...
Oh, so the fees. A well-intended new chair of the event for Brotoberfest. We have a city resident that stepped forward to chair the event, Joe Burchell, very much in the Main Street spirit, and he brought, got the domain name brotoberfest.com, dot net, dot org. Surprisingly, it was open. Amazing. Well, but there was a little technicality. Lloyd wisely noticed. He put it in his name, and we wanted that in the city's name. So we had to wait and get that, and I'm not a techie by any means, but I found out from our farmer's market manager that whoever holds the domain name should be the city employee, and then that transfers with the position. So we're getting that, it's transferred to my name, not Joe Burchell.
Okay.
So we got a hold of GoDaddy, actually through a state employee who told us this whole, how you do that.
Yeah, good.
It takes three months to transfer it, but we're on it. It's being transferred to me, so whoever has this position down the road, Brotoberfest, we hope it's successful with all this work in Monroe.
One more question. Could you give me some insight onto what Heinonen's got going on?
Heinonen, he's been in, he's done a great job with our building department. He wants to get going. He's having a hard time getting contractors on the job. He hopes to, by the end of the construction season, have his plaza in place, and he's still, it's been he and his family's dream is to have a 30-foot Christmas tree, seasonal, in his plaza, which is part of the design plan. There's a big pit and a deep hole with a cover, other than when the tree gets dropped. Now, this is, this is quite a spectacle. A 30-foot tree is serious.
Oh, yeah, that'll be quite impressive. Now, is this impervious, or is it grass out front?
It's impervious with drainage. It's a brick that can take on water and...
Yeah, terrific.
Yeah, he's done a great job with engineering and the building department.
Wonderful.
So that's what's going on there, and...
I appreciate it.
We want to coordinate in the future with Historical Society and the commission, kind of figure out, what do we do with that big tree?
Oh, yeah.
And still honor all the cool things happening at the depot, but what do we do with that tree? So we'll figure it out.
I got something.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Bob, I've been watching the 125 East Lake project. I've taken some pictures.
Great.
I got some good angle shots on the morning sunshine.
Great.
And I've been very impressed with the way the contractor covered those, that brick wall over the weekend with plastic, because you're talking about 100-year-old mortar, okay? And I believe it was a double wall that he uncovered. Triple wall? Well, that mortar hasn't seen any rain. Mortar can, older mortar can absorb water, like a rain could collapse, okay? And he took precautionary measures, okay, to block that off with plastic, okay? That was very wonderful. I don't think we required him to do so, but he had foresight to do that. He deserves a mention of that, okay? And any idea how old those bricks are? One building appears to be older than the others, the bricks, to me.
The last piece, as you look at the Lake Street Tavern and that last piece they're working on, which is the left side or the west side, that is slightly older. That building is probably from the 1870s.
Before.
When the owners of the adjacent, all the adjacent buildings east of that, up and including the stone building.
Yeah.
Sometime in the 1880s, they went to that subject building and all the rest of them to the east, and they put the same windows, they reworked the windows, and they put a cornice on, all the same. Now, remember, the stone building had a fire in the early 1930s.
Yes, yes.
The building collapsed, they rebuilt it, and the stone came in in the late '30s. But at one point, it all matched. It was all the same. So what's exciting is that that cornice is coming back on three of those buildings and all the windows.
We got a picture of all that, of the original building. The older bricks, the dye, there was, the bricks were made in South Lyon. There was two or three brick-making facilities here in South Lyon, but after a certain time, sometime around the time they rebuilt the hotel, built the hotel, a commercial dye was available to brickmasons, and you can tell the difference in the bricks somewhere around 1885, 1888. The bricks before that are different, if you look at them closely.
That's great.
Anyway, I hope, I hope we can, that contractor can pinpoint closely when he thinks that building was built.
Yeah, they're doing a great job. They have a good bricking company. They're about a week off because brickers can name their price, and all contractors, we're in a boom time for construction.
It was triple wall, eh? Okay, that's it.
Anyone else for Mr. Donahue?
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
We'll move on to old business number one. Consider tabling Arcadius requests for approval of the restrictive covenant on 128 South Lafayette. Suggested motions to table this request.
Mr. Mayor?
Tim?
So I've had, I've been, several conversations with ASTI Environmental, who is the city's environmental consultant regarding this, and I am awaiting a report from ASTI regarding this matter. And until we get that, I think there's really nothing to be done on this until we get the report and can review it and take action based on it.
Thank you, Tim. Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Yes, I'd like to move to table the Arcadius requests for approval of the restricted covenant until the last meeting in July.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Old business number two. Consider approval of second reading of ordinance to repeal Section 58-53, disturbance in business or public place or lawful meeting, and adopt new Section 58-53, interference with conduct of business, interference with meetings of a public body, to bring regulations into conformity with current state law and provide a penalty for violations of rules of conduct for public meetings.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Will.
So this is the second reading. There have been no changes since the first reading, and this was an issue that came up when Matt Seleski from my office was preparing the public comment rules, and this is the second reading, just to follow through and adopt that ordinance change.
Councilmember Kurtzwell?
I move to approve the second reading of the ordinance to repeal the City of South Lyon Code of Ordinances, Section 58-53, disturbance in business or public place or of lawful meeting, and adopting a new Section 58-53, interference with conduct of business, interference with meetings of a public body.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Move forward to new business this evening. Consider award of bid recommendation letter from Dixon Engineering for Water Tower Recoding Project. At this time, I'd like to welcome up Mr. Ron Beeson to speak on this. If anyone has any questions for... up Mr. Ron Beeson to speak on this. If anyone has any questions for Mr. Beeson when he's done.
Thank you, council. Good evening. My name's Ron Beeson. I'm the chief operator of the Water and Wastewater Department. I'm here tonight to represent the Water Department. If I could, I'd like to give a brief summary on the painting of the water tower. This started back in 2016, believe it or not, with the hiring of Dixon Engineering. At that time, they did a complete inspection of the water tower inside and out. And the idea was to give us a cost summary and analyze the situation at the water tower to see if there was anything major that needed to be done right away. They came back with about a 50-page summary, and in that summary, they came up with a cost summary. At that time, it was $231,000 to have it painted with a engineering and contingency plan of $40,000 on top of that. So, the total was $271,000. At that time, we could generate a budget to have this, a line item in the budget to have this painted. It was in the budget. There was $178,500 in the budget, 2017, 2018 budget, with another $117,000 in professional services. That line item, that professional service, 117, was put in the wrong budget. That was in the wastewater budget. That should have been in the water budget to pay for the extra costs of the water tower being painted and the engineering costs. The remaining $17,000 leftovers should have stayed in the wastewater budget. And if you look back in the previous years, you'll see it usually is $18,000 to $17,000 in each budget year. I can't tell you how that mistake happened, but originally, that was budgeted for it, and that was the intention of that money. We missed the timeline to have the water tower painted for the spring. There's a brief window. They take bids. They bid it out. There's very few, I think there's seven that we had to bid for this year. Very few companies that do that. At that time, we missed the window, but we needed to look at VFDs for our water plant. So, we used that money. We knew we weren't going to get it done in the budget year at that point. So, we used that money to put VFDs in number three and number four. And I think I discussed that a little bit with the council, why we're doing that. It's to keep pressure in the city without the tower online. If we didn't do that, it would be a catastrophe. We'd lose pressure, and that would mean boil water alerts. So, in order to do that, previously, we would have one operator round the clock, seven days, 24/7, for as long as it took to paint that tower. And I believe last painting, it took 30 to 40 days. So, you can imagine, we were exhausted at that point. The plan is, this time, in the bid packet, it suggests 50 days. So, it's a little bit more than the 30, 35 days that I would like, but I can't control that. At that point, it was bid out. There were seven bids. Of the seven bids, two of them, Dixon Engineering, I think you have letters in front of you, they would prefer us not to accept those bids. And there's several reasons. Number one was workmanship, the quality of workmanship, and the other was timeframes. They went over the allotted time. I would, we have to stay within that timeline. We're going to be running off two pumps on VFDs. There is no room for error. If we lose one or two of those pumps, the city would be without water. So, we want it in a timely fashion, and we don't need shabby workmanship. We need to get it done as soon as possible. The two lowest bids, another thing, these are, if you have this bid packet, they separated each of the line items. So, we could delete any of the items that we felt we didn't need. One of them is the mechanical mixer. Mechanical mixer, we don't have one presently. They do put them in some of the newer water towers. The mixer is to agitate the water to keep it from freezing. And you see those in communities that have low use, particularly in the winter. What we do here is we change our levels so the pumps cycle more often, agitates the water more often, and keeps it mixed. So, we don't have a sediment problem, so that's not an issue. And we don't have a chlorine residual. Those are the other typical reasons that you would put a mixer in there. And neither, all three of them, we don't have a concern with. So, I was able to eliminate that, and it was according to each bid, they differed from $19,000 down to, you know, $13,000. So, if you delete that from any of the bids, Horizon Brothers would still be the lowest bid. And that was one that Dixon Engineering suggested we do not accept as a bid. The second, if you, would be LC United, if you subtract their $19,000 for the mechanical mixer. They would be the second bid at $241,000. I know that's a big difference. Right now, we have $178,500 budgeted for the painting inside and out. We would be a little shy, and we have $20,000 in professional services. We would have to ask for approval to use some of the enterprise money to fund this at this time.
I was kind of curious. Did you get any resistance from Dixon on deleting that mixer?
No.
Okay.
They understood. In fact, it's in the bid packet, and it's in the summary that installation of a mechanical mixer unit would be a $20,000 to the projected cost, but the mixer can be added or deleted.
Thank you.
We have never had an issue with it freezing, so I can't see spending that much. And with a mechanical mixer, it's moving parts.
Another thing to fix, yeah.
Other thing to fix, and that means somebody's going to dive in there and dive into the tank and fix it, so.
Councilmember Kennedy?
So, just another question there, Ron. I think the useful life on the painting, the coatings, somewhere in the neighborhood of 15-plus years or so?
Yes.
And we're currently at about 22.
Actually, I looked up in the archives. That was painted in 1999 by LC United.
Okay, so we're at 20 years then. And the other thing, and if I understood exactly what you were getting at there, is the, basically, the need to move quickly on something like this to secure your position on the schedule for the contractor in order to get this accomplished during the available window of time.
Our window is dwindling, yes. We were already late in the bid process, and we think that showed up in some of these bids being extremely high. Like I said, there's very few companies that do this. Those high bidders were probably booked up, and they didn't necessarily need the work, so.
Makes sense.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Ron, okay, I've had some various questions about this. Does the DEQ have any objection to how we hire a contractor, how we use a contractor?
No.
Okay, then what would be, what would be to prevent us from doing our own sandblasting and rinsing of the metal on the inside?
I...
Maybe we could save at least $40,000?
We don't have that equipment and the expertise to do that.
No, you'd contract it out.
We could contract that out. I would be concerned about QAQC, Quality Control, Quality Assurance.
Would the DEQ complain about it?
The DEQ would not complain about it. The DQ, they have nothing to do with this water tower.
Oh, actually, I thought they did.
No, no.
Well, do you see any way that any of these companies, okay, would be willing to split their contracting work and allow us to save $40,000 to $60,000?
I don't see that happening. No, I don't think that you're going to hire an outside contractor to do the sandblasting and then have this, one of these painting companies come and do that. They wouldn't do that.
But it's tightly inspected by the state?
No, it's inspected by Dixon Engineering.
Oh, Dixon Engineering?
Yes.
Okay, what are you, what... I'm not happy with the whole thing. It's not been itemized exactly the way I would, thought you would have done it. But we need it. I understand. We've got to have it, okay? It's not something we can play with, really, as a football or anything. We've got to have it. There's no way we can, we can take, shave $40,000 off this bid, in your opinion?
There is not.
Okay, I guess I'll withdraw my idea to make a motion to...
It's very specific. These companies, they go in, they have the equipment, they know what they're doing. I don't, I don't think you could subcontract anybody to do that.
Do you have a performance bond with these companies that do that?
Yep.
They walk off on a job at one year, you can sue them.
No, they're bonded. Yes, we're fully covered.
Okay.
Yes.
Councilmember Presley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a quick question. Did we apply for grants? Is that a possibility, an opportunity that may...
I haven't asked. That would be something Dixon Engineering, but it's a maintenance thing. It's not, I doubt it very much.
Timing issue as well.
Yeah, I can imagine. We probably, if there was an opportunity, we'd probably miss the boat. But just for the fun of it, could we reach out?
I could ask Tom from Dixon Engineering and see if there is any available funding other than...
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Councilmember Kurtswell?
So, in the budget, we have $178,000.
$178,500.
And you need 241, so you're short about $63,000?
$63,000. $62,500.
Okay, you have money in the enterprise funds for that.
Yes.
Okay, I mean, I...
Oh, yes.
Yeah. So, the money is there, and that's what the enterprise funds are for. What was that number again?
For...
It's, I had 63,1. What do you have?
$62,500 is what I had.
Okay, $62,5.
Yep.
I mean...
Then you have professional services on top of that, and we have monies in there of $20,000, which we're looking at between 20 and 30,000. Usually, it's 10% for engineering costs, inspections and everything, so.
They take 10% of the contract?
Pretty much.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's, I think that the enterprise funds are there. That's what they're there for. I think what we do in the next budgeting season is sort of learn from this and find out why we missed the boat. You know, why a mistake was made in the budget a year ago. I don't need to know the answers. I really don't.
You don't, but there was, there was transitions going on, obviously, you know, three. And I was put in the middle of this, and I found information, and I was able to come up with a plan.
We just need to stay on top of these, especially these big expenditures. So...
Absolutely.
The enterprise funds are there to spend. This is something that has to be done. Does this painting also include the painting on the outside of the water tower itself?
It does, and the logo. I think everyone has seen a picture of the logo. The last picture I saw did not show that established date. I have to make sure that Tom is aware of that, and...
That had been modified.
The actual date, yeah, that was, that came after. So, that isn't in the original pictures.
On Dixon's version?
Right.
Oh, okay.
So, I don't know who has that.
I've got it. We can sign it down.
Okay.
Councilmember Kibble, did you have anything else?
Actually, I was just hoping like crazy that we could get everything formulated, what needs to take place to make it legal to pull that money out of the enterprise fund, so.
Budget amendment.
Budget amendment, I guess.
Councilmember Presley?
I have a quick question, just for the logistics of this. I'm not quite familiar with it. You said, on average, how many days does this take?
This is usually 35 days. This is inside and out. In the bid packet, it's 50 days, so.
50 seems like a lot.
50 does seem like a lot, and that doesn't mean it'll take 50 days. LC United, obviously, they, they're a good company, and I'm hoping they'll finish it quicker. But it depends on weather, rain.
Yeah, there's multiple factors, I'm sure.
Sure there is, yep. And we're having some safety railing installed on it, too, that isn't there right now. At the very top, there's nothing there, so, yeah, they're going to put a...
Well, my other question, kind of to follow up with that, is with this having been done 20 years ago, technology has come a long way. I was hoping we could speed the process up with new technology.
That was an issue with one of the bidders. He has new technology. It takes twice as long.
I saw that.
That's the new technology, and according to the information I have, it doesn't work.
They said it still does a great job.
It does a great job, but...
Not efficient.
Yes. It can take twice the time.
You also have metal that's weathered that much longer, too. It's 20 years old metal.
It's pitting. There's rust pits on it, so it continues to rust. Everyone has seen it, I think. It's due, definitely.
Well, don't get me wrong. I want us to do a good job, and if that means taking our time, by all means. I wouldn't encourage rushing through this. I just, I heard 50, and I panicked.
That's, yeah.
Councilmember Kennedy?
When I spoke to Lori about this, she said, yes, indeed. Obviously, the money's in the enterprise fund. She would transfer the money to the appropriate account and then issue a budget amendment that would reflect that, and that would be the process to be followed.
Councilmember Kurtswell?
Is this, what budget is this coming out of?
This would be the waters, the water budget, 2018-19.
2018-19?
This comes out of the next...
Okay, I'm not going to vote for, I mean, I mean, if you want, come back in July, but I'm not going to take official action on anything that is budgeted in a budget that is not in effect until July 1st.
If we wait till July 1st, we'll miss the window.
Call them and tell them that you have money now in the enterprise funds, because I've seen the budget.
I can try. I can do a letter of intent. I can try that, but you have to understand, none of these companies are hurting for business. It's all...
I understand that, but I'm just letting you know that I am not going to, that's it. So, there are ways to deal with this. I have looked at the enterprise funds for this year. Some of the money, if they're, do they want all the money upfront, or do they want half?
It's usually at the end. Now...
But then you don't need the money now.
That brings up a good question, because there's still money in that budget line item for, and if they would accept a half payment before July 1st, I would, if you're comfortable with paying them before they start work, they're three, four months out.
Well, what are their terms?
I don't know what their terms are.
Okay, so you don't even know if they need this money now?
I do not. That's, Dixon Engineering was hired by the city...
Okay.
...to hire the painters, so, and the contractors. They were hired to do that.
Okay, well, I would be in favor of approving the contract with payment to be made after the 2018-19 fiscal budget takes effect. If that's what you're looking for, that's similar to a letter of intent that we intend to follow through with this contract, but payment will not come tonight. It won't be authorized tonight. I mean, does that help your situation?
It's already June 11th. I don't see that really being a problem.
We can do, just like we did at the last meeting for the cars.
Right, okay.
Approve them. Push comes to shove, we can end up making a, at our next meeting, we can make a budget transfer, an amendment out of the enterprise fund now, if they need some cash upfront.
Right.
So, I mean, just find out how low we can go and book everything into 2018, 2019.
Councilmember Kennedy?
That isn't in that, that front load.
Actually, I believe we actually have money remaining from the VFD installation.
We do. There is...
Give them a good faith deposit right now.
If we can move forward, we can, we can give them a large deposit, if not, you know, half of the monies in this year's budget.
As long as it secures our place on the schedule.
Correct. If the council would approve that, I could...
Well, I'll make a motion that we award the water tower project to LC United Painting minus the installation of the mechanical mixer for $2,000, or $241,000. And is that, is that inclusive of the engineering?
Engineering costs are separate.
Okay.
And there is a, there's a line item for that, professional services. There's And there is a, there's, there's a line item for that, professional services. There's twenty thousand. That's probably a little low. I think we're probably looking at twenty-five thousand for that, so we would, again, there's gonna be money in this year's budget still that we may be able to use. I, I would have to-
Well, do you want to do a not to exceed two sixty-six? I mean, that makes sense. All right, so I, I will amend that to a not to exceed two, two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars.
If you need to come back, then come back.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, Ron. That was very informative.
Ron, I'd like to talk with you a little bit after the meeting, okay? Okay, all right.
Moving on to new business number two, consider resolution authorizing the request for reimbursement from Oakland County West Nile Virus Fund. Explanation of this topic, Oakland County approved our West Nile program on May twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen. We provide insect repellent for residents and apply mosquito larva sighting to catch basins. The recommendation is to approve this resolution.
Councilmember Kurtswell?
Yes, thank you. I move to approve the resolution, which is noted in the, oh, wait a minute. Where is the resolution? The resolution is attached to the agenda note, new business item number two, and move to approve the resolution for reimbursement from the Oakland County West Nile Virus Fund in the amount of one thousand five hundred and forty-six dollars and eighteen cents.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes.
New business number three, consider approval of resolution to revise and update the city's credit card use policy. Explanation of this topic, in light of the personnel changes and the administration, administrative staff, the city needs to update the credit card use policy adopted on July twenty-eighth, two thousand and fourteen. To, among other things, reflect those changes, list the credit card issued to the city and their respective limits, and identify the city employees authorized to use those credit cards. The recommendation is to approve this.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to revise and update the city's credit card use policy as presented.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. At this point, we'll move on to the budget this evening. Councilmember Kurtswell, go ahead.
I ran into some taxpayers over the weekend. They had some questions for me. I couldn't answer them, so I thought I would ask it now. Lloyd, when you brought the request for the purchase of the two police cars, what was the price of those cars?
I'd have to go back to the records and check that. I don't recall off the top of my head.
What, what do you, you don't, yes?
The purchase price of just the vehicles alone is just under fifty-six thousand.
For both?
Yes.
Okay, for fifty-six thousand. When you go, and here's the question the gentleman had. When you go to the budget, so you have some taxpayers that are watching the South Line Police Department, they went to the capital equipment line, nine seven eight, apparently the budget, it was online, and they noticed that the, we approved a budget that allowed for eighty-four thousand dollars in, for the two vehicles. The total now is fifty-six, so you are roughly about twenty-eight thousand dollars under the budget.
Mr. Mayor, I can address that.
Chief Collins, go ahead.
Yeah, whenever we can, let me preface it with, you have to remember that a police car these days is a, literally a rolling office. It is crammed with everything from modems to computers to mobile printers to emergency equipment, emergency lighting, gun racks, prisoner shields, partitions that separate the prisoner from the passenger compartment. So, when we prepare the budget, it's not just the cost of the police car, it's the cost of all that equipment, and we do transfer as much as we can from one car that's taken out of service to the next. Plus, it's very expensive to have the emergency and electronic equipment taken out of the old cars and then have someone install the radios, the electronics into the new cars. So, that's the differential.
Okay, so the confusion is, is the cars that have been budgeted for the fifty-five thousand or fifty-six thousand, whatever that is, that number that was given to me, that doesn't include the items that you're just now talking about. I thought these cars came completely loaded.
Mr. Mayor, they, they don't. I just, I think I covered it pretty well. There's the car cost, then there's the changeover and the equipment cost.
Okay.
I, I remember you mentioning that in the budget meeting as well, at least that we were gonna reuse as much of the stuff as we could out of the old cars, so.
So, it's thirty thou, it's fifteen thousand dollars per car? Because that was, because they're gonna watch this and see this, so I just wanna make sure that their questions get answered.
Whoever they are would be welcome to come into the police department. We'd go over this in great detail with them.
Well, for some reason, they didn't ask you. I think it's because they ran into me. I think that's why. So, they just wanted an explanation, so. And that's it for the budget. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Does anyone else have anything on the budget?
No.
We'll move forward to the manager's report.
Yes, I distributed the weekly report to council. I'd be happy to entertain any questions from that report or the prior report. The only thing I have to add is that the Kensington Valley Chamber of Commerce fundraiser, which is a golf outing, is taking place on Wednesday, June thirteenth, at Cattails Golf Club on Nine Mile Road. Registration is at eight in the morning, and that's a very worthy event that they put on annually.
Thank you.
All right, at this point, we're actually gonna open up for our second public comment. If anyone had anything at this time, please state your name and address. Okay. And now we'll move forward to council comments, and this evening, how about Councilman Richard starts us off?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try to be brief and to the point. I think we all have been saddened by the passing of former Councilman Waddell and his wife, who passed away six days after his, his death, as I am aware. I went by the house with, on my own, in my little scooter chair, and talked with them for a moment or two, a few days later. If they have a memorial service, it'll be a private affair. Anyway, we all extend our sympathies and our concern for them or the family at this time. Now, I'd like to move on to a couple other little items. Today is the eleventh, and our friend and former mayor, Ted Wallace, this was his birthday. Happy birthday to Ted. Tomorrow, being the twelfth of, of June, for information, is President Donald Trump's birthday. He's ten days older than I am. I envy the guy. Okay, we, Linda already managed the damage that was sustained at our gazebo. It's gonna take some real work to fix this, I'll tell you. They were, whatever they were fighting about, they really knocked the walls out. An act of faith, act of very important part of our community, Mary Ann Mahalik retired last, as of last Thursday, and we all wish her the very best wishes for her service over the last previous twelve years. She has impacted many groups and families in our community with food and assistance, and we certainly owe her a great deal. She went the extra mile to take, take me to the hospital and the doctor a couple times, for sure. Wonderful, dedicated lady. Developments in our downtown central business district are coming along nicely. I applaud Bob's efforts. The DDA plans for the booklet that I read in here, I wish I had more personal time to devote to the historical aspects of identifying features of our buildings. I would hope someone else could come forward. I'm too busy to throw myself into that. An historical society does not want to get involved in that particular aspect of our historical preservation. It's gotta be a voluntary effort, and I just can't, I can't cover it all. Also, I want to mention that on my efforts to form a cemetery commission, several people have expressed some interest over the last month, and that looks good, so that's rolling along. Hopefully, in the future, we can come back to council with a, a real plan, okay? And with that, I thank you very much, and I'll pass to, back to you, Dave.
Thank you. Councilmember Richards. Councilmember Kennedy?
Just want to mention that with the school year coming to a close, I'd like to encourage our residents, young and old alike, to continue to take advantage of the wide variety of programs offered by the Salem South Line District Library that they, they offer throughout the summer. These include sessions like the, the Rock and Roll Bookshelf, that's gonna take place with a magician on Ju, June fourteenth, telling a story with story artist Jennifer Strauss on July twenty-fifth, a whodunit escape room on June twenty-eighth, self-defense class for teen girls on July eighteenth, and a digital scavenger hunt on July twenty-fifth, and walking club throughout the summer for the older folks. I'm sure there's something there for, for everyone. On another note, the, the concerts in the park begin this Friday at seven o'clock till eight-thirty at the gazebo in McCady Park. First group performing will be Gemini. And I'd just like to follow up on Linda Ross's request and encourage volunteers to help the historical society with their gardening requirements, especially around McCady Park. It might be possibly an effort for a scouting group, perhaps, or some other local organization. That's all I have. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Kennedy? Councilmember Walton?
You know, actually Steve covered a lot of things I had noted down, so I'll just say congratulations to the class of twenty eighteen. I wish you all a wonderful future, and may all students stay safe and have a good summer, and please keep in mind that there's a lot of hard work that goes into our park, to our historical society. Don't damage it. If it's not yours, just leave it alone and enjoy it, just so the rest of us can enjoy it too. With that, that's all I have. Have a good night.
Thank you. Councilmember Walton? Councilmember Presley?
I wanted to just make a couple mention of a few things. Thank you to the staff for making a note of the council conduct rules at the bottom of the agenda and also on the back of the agenda. I thought it was well done and something to make note of in the future, so this is the first meeting that we've actually had it printed and well done to our staff. Also, again, I always say this every single meeting, but we need volunteers. Volunteers, if you know people, spread the word, anyone who might be interested. It might pique their interest to join a commission or a committee. We need the help. And lastly, on July fourteenth, the Four Seasons Garden Club is hosting a garden walk from nine to four. So, something to keep in mind. Mark your calendars. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Presley? Councilmember Kurtswell?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to very briefly remind people that the new conduct rules include disturbing the peace. And Lloyd, I did have an opportunity to speak with some individuals who provided me a different scenario as to how the situation with Don Biggio could have been handled that evening. They disagreed with some of your comments that you made. The issue of who was not afraid or who felt that they were safe really rested with the individuals up here. It's, did I feel safe? Did Rose feel safe? And one of the suggestions was that if they had been the officer, the individual would have been removed immediately from the building. So, there's a difference in how it would have been handled. Just wanted to bring that to your attention. Additionally, I want to say that there was a wonderful graduation event that happened on Saturday that was down at Eastern Michigan University, and that was all the seniors from the high schools that were graduating. What a phenomenal event. I heard from many, many of the parents. The Oakland County Sheriff was there. I don't know if they got a standing ovation or what, but I was quite surprised to learn that one of the resource officers in the high school actually has a law degree. So, a very, very talented individual that the school district has brought on board. Also like to thank the security staff at Eastern Michigan University, the campus security, they did a fabulous job, and so did the police department in the city of Ypsilanti. So, I think it's really good to thank law enforcement when they do a fabulous job, and, and in this case, you had three different law enforcement agencies working together, and they were working together because they were protecting the wonderful students and the parents of, of the South Line and the Line Township area. So, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Additionally, I would like to thank our, one of our own South Line Police Officers, Sergeant Baki. He has participated in, I believe, the Lakes Area Citizens Police Academy, and he has garnered a great reputation for his commitment to this program. Apparently, individuals that know Mr. Sergeant Baki say that the man never has a mean word to say, doesn't berate anybody, doesn't go after any residents, doesn't whip them around. He's very, very kind to everybody, and he handles this program with class and clearly, clearly gives the South Line Police Department a very good name. So, Sergeant Baki, if there's ever a promotion in, in place, I would hope that maybe you would get it, because I think you give a good, good name for the South Line Police Department. Thank you for your work. Next, I want to say that I had an opportunity. I was invited to Lynn Lander's son's graduation, Trevor, to his party on Sat, Sunday at the hotel. Once again, I was with some very, very talented high school students, very brilliant young ladies and gentlemen that have futures ahead of them. Every one of them were just really engaging. They're going to great schools. They have great careers ahead of them. And I think for the students that are sitting here in the audience tonight, I think you have great careers headed for you too. I just, I couldn't believe it. I just, I was just so proud to think that I live in a community with students that, that are already thinking about what they want to do. I mean, I'm almost seventy, and I'm sitting here wondering, what am I supposed to do for a living? And these people here, you know, at your young age, you know what you want to do. So, congratulations to each and every one of them. Lynn's son got accepted to Purdue, and he is going to be going to the honors program in engineering. I did have an opportunity to meet Lynn's father. We spoke for a while about gardening and agriculture items. Her sisters were in from town. And all of us in the chamber will have another opportunity to say goodbye to Lynn as she moves on to South Line at the golf outing on Wednesday with the chamber. So, congratulations Lynn and Trevor, and thank you for your family coming into South Line. As to the cameras going on to the gazebo in the McCady Park, I, I am definitely in favor of that, but I think you need to do some monitoring as to who's gonna be watching the film. I've already discussed one incident with Lloyd about what I consider to be a misuse of a film that was taken in the gazebo area, and would hope that some provisions will be put in place to make sure that that misstep does not occur again. And also last, I'd like to thank the owners of the businesses that are investing in the downtown. I was at the Corner Cafe last Tuesday. I shopped at Grand Tonk. I bought a couple baby shower gifts. I bought graduation gifts, bought stuff for my garden. The streets were packed. I couldn't even find a place to park. And I met some wonderful people in the Corner Cafe. We were talking about all the changes that were going on in the downtown, and I think it was just a wonderful, wonderful time to be in downtown South Line. So, thank you, everyone. Good night, and thank you for inviting all of us into your homes tonight. Have a great week.
Thank you.
Bye out there.
Councilmember Kurtswell, or, I'm sorry, Councilmember Kibble?
Okay, Rob, I think this one's for you. Have we continued to require certified documents stating private hydrants are in good working order in developments that haven't been dedicated to the city?
Yeah, Chief Weir keeps up on that. I think we got two left to go.
Okay.
But all the other ones have been done.
I figured this time of year was probably the time you tried kicking them out.
I think he's down to two.
Okay, wonderful.
I'll email you with an update tomorrow.
I figured that was a deal, but I wanted to make, make certain we weren't overlooking something. There's been an awful lot of distractions for us keeping the eye on the ball, so thank you. Hopefully, this weekend will end up being one that's conducive to having a good farmer's market with some weather that, that'll be helpful. market with some weather that, that'll be helpful. And I did, my wife and I had gone down to the Corner Cafe for some ice cream, and I've really enjoyed the idea that I can walk a couple of blocks up until 9:00 at night and get an ice cream cone, some good Guernsey ice cream. So that's, that's a terrific little benefit. And I was speaking to them about the notion of, you know, a lot of the films, if they get out before the 9:00 drop dead there, they can really capitalize on a big influx of traffic down there. So hopefully, they, and he had even made a suggestion that maybe they'll print up some cards to get a little benefit of cost if you go to the show, come on down and get a better deal on your ice cream or whatever. So I thought that was a off-the-cuff, good suggestion. Well, that's all I had. Thank you very much, though.
Thank you, Councilmember Kibble. I'll be brief, too. I was able to meet with a couple of AP government groups that were doing their final project, and I had a thoroughly a great time speaking to the kids. Like we were saying earlier, I mean, you got your whole lives in front of you. Good luck. So good luck to all of our friends from South Lyon and South Lyon East that graduated, and have a little fun this summer, but be ready to go back to work in the fall. And with that, I will look for moving to our closed session. Which, Lisa, I believe we're going to leave the auditorium here and go to the conference room, and leave the camera running, so then when we come back, if there's any action, we'll have it on the camera. Is that correct?
That's what council and chief said, yes.
Okay. Does that sound good to everybody?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Will we leave everything right here?
Yes, Tim, sorry.
If I could ask Chief Collins, is Mr. Fleury in route or here, you know?
He's here, Simon.
He was scheduled to be here at 8:00, so I would suspect he's here.
He's outside.
He's outside. He's right there.
And also, just for council, there are two different reasons for going into closed session as listed on the agenda. The items under Section 8E is an elephant, and H require a two-thirds vote. The property acquisition under subsection G, as in George, requires a majority vote.
Do you need me to read that whole thing, or are we just looking for a motion?
We need a roll call vote.
Okay.
And I think we ought to do a separate vote on each basis for going in.
Okay.
Being two of them.
Got you. So let's do the roll call vote on what you said, E and H?
Correct.
First, and Lisa, whenever you're ready.
Need a motion.
Okay, I apologize.
I make a motion pursuant to Sections 8E and H of the Open Meetings Act, MCL 125.268E and H, to consult with the attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in pending litigation in Michigan Department of Civil Rights.
A second.
Kibble?
Yes.
Presian?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Walton?
No.
Kurtzwell?
No.
Ocked.
Yes.
Is the result?
Yes.
Got you.
Okay, I'll make a motion that pursuant to Section 8D of the Open Meetings Act, we go into closed session for discussion about purchase or lease of real property.
A second.
Kibble?
Yes.
Presian?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Walton?
No.
Kurtzwell?
No.
Ocked.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Chief Collins?
Could I suggest that we invite the students to come down for signatures before?
Yes, that's a great idea. If any of you need signatures, catch us on the way out, so you guys don't have to wait around, okay? Thanks, great tip, chief.
Do you need signatures?
Need stuff signed, bring it on.
We're going into a closed meeting that you won't be able to attend, and we don't know how long it'll take, so.
Oh, yeah, come on down, guys.
Oh, excellent note-taking.
Hope we get a little break between the.
Have a good summer.
I stopped by and saw your mom the other day.
Hi.
Thanks for having me. How are you?
I had a real joy. I could have stayed there with you guys all afternoon.
Yeah, okay.
Well, if you ever have any other questions, feel free to get ahold of me.
Yeah, okay. Well, that stands to reason. That one usually gets kind of tough and dicey.
I've never seen a water bottle like that. How does that operate?
I know, and they're held bent to not spend a dime they don't have. Okay, thanks a lot.
I guess nobody asked me to sign, so, okay. Okay, legs, come on. Get with the program. Okay, we leaving everything here? Are we taking it with us?
I'm gonna leave my bag. I've got to come back. Because we got to come back into out of closed session for any questions.
You were doing so good. We ended at like eight forty-five.
They're having their meeting right now.
I know, I know. I gotta get home and...
They ordered Chinese.
They don't eat Chinese in San Antonio.
I'm sorry.
They shake handshakes, that's all I know of them.
Did they?
Yeah.
Was it in public?
Yeah. I mean, I didn't see the video or anything, but I mean, they showed a picture of it. They said the meeting's going well.
This is where I'm right here.
So do we need a motion to come out of closed?
Yeah, it doesn't hurt.
I'll make the motion to come out of closed session.
I'll second.
Okay. Everyone? So, we have a motion from Councilmember Walton and seconded by Councilmember Kurtzwell to return from closed session. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Now we'll look for a motion on... Go ahead, Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a motion to authorize the city attorney to take action regarding trial or settlement strategy in the pending litigation with the Michigan Department of Civil Rights as to the city of South Lyon and Joyce Cloisey.
Just, Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, that's not me, that would be Mr. Flory, the different attorney.
Thank you, correct. We have a motion, we have a second from Councilmember Kivell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. And I will now entertain a motion on the second matter.
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtzwell.
You're more than welcome. A motion to authorize the city attorney and the interim city manager to move forward on a certain property acquisition.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?